Secondly, we start the meeting. All those in favor? Under Old Business, the first article is, we ask Becky to come in and Carl, we're glad you're here. And what we kind of wanted to do, what I was hoping we would do, is have a discussion about budget. Because we think, let me rephrase that. I think that a 4.1% increase with declining enrollment, I don't understand that. And maybe you can convince me, but I think the other members have some comments about it. And our plan is just to have a discussion. So if you could kind of tell us where that came from.
Well, one of the reasons for the increase is some additional special education costs that were significant. There's also a significant increase in the insurance rates because of the big claim that we had. Retirement costs were another big hit.
Yeah, retirement costs were hit. Special ed, the enrollment isn't really down this year. It's flat. It might actually end up being a little bit ticked up, actually, a little bit in 2017, 18. So it'd be a, not a huge shocker, but it's not, the enrollment isn't down as much in 2018.
But the projections haven't changed much?
Not a lot, not a lot. I mean, I think we're flat showing out, but that's what the projection predicted. I think, I have thought all along, I've spoken to you guys about this. I think as central maintenance has grown a little bit, the hospitals relocation with easy access from Belgrade and Sydney, I would expect it a little bit of uptick. I don't know if that's the cause of it. Sydney specifically was one of the towns where population study, we said we're going to have around 30 students in the incoming kindergarten class who are already over 40 for that, so I don't know if that's good or not. But the population is going to be flat or probably a little higher next year than it was this year. Regular education, we did make some cuts to try to adjust, you know, keep on our class size adjustments. Some buildings are up in staff, some buildings are down in staff, but there was a little bit of a reduction there. Special ed costs haven't continued to increase. We have been underfunded in special ed, in my opinion, for several years. We're trying to slowly, we're trying to get that stuff back in. We have, we added a teacher in Belgrade this year. We added a teacher in China at middle school this year, so that we now have two in every building. We did those in December timeframe due to, in special education, you can only have maximum case loads. You can't have more than 36 students at this level. So we grew over that. You have to hire more staff. That's the law. So we did that in China and Belgrade. So, but that doesn't, you know, we couldn't increase our budget this year, so we just had to make it work. So we were on budget freezes and trying to figure that out. So those two are in the budget next year. And there's another position at the high school and Leslonski Middle School that we were able to split a position. So that's three special education positions. So that's why special ed budget specifically is up significant amounts. Insurance was a big one. It hit us, we've had some good, I mean, our insurance numbers are lower than anybody else in the area. By, I don't even off the top of my head, I want to say like 15 to 20 percent. Our insurance numbers are pretty good, but we did get, we did get a significant increase in insurance costs this year. And that's a lot of money. Those are some of the bigger, those are some of the bigger reasons for the increase. The 4.1% is a little misleading. It's actually, there's $197,000 in our budget, which is, it's $35 million budget. So, you know, $350,000 a percent, so a little more than half a percent. So it's a, our budget increase is 3.5 percent. There's $197,000 for the day one program. I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's a statewide program. It's operated by the state of Maine in conjunction with the Department of Corrections. They're at Goodwill Hindley. A public school has to be their fiscal agent. We are their fiscal agent now. So money comes into the school, money goes out of the school.
Pass through.
It's a pass through. So there's $200,000 basically that's a pass through. So back that out, it's still a 3.5% increase, but I just try to explain that to everybody as they, as they do it, that that is in their, in the budget. So our, so that's about, 3.6 is about what our increase is. That's it. Salary increases. Those are some of the biggest drivers. You know, if you look at those, and we did add a behavior teacher that's half special ed, half regular ed. So there's four teaching positions. We add those four teaching positions that, let's see, $3,000 each. That's $160,000. Those numbers, they add quickly. You guys know that. I know you do.
I'm just interested, what percent of your budget goes to special ed?
Hold on a second. Hold on a second, I'll tell you.
You knew that was going to be a question.
What's that?
You knew that.
No, I just grabbed a copy of the budget. I grabbed a few copies in case you, well, I didn't know if you wanted them or not, but. Okay, so special ed. Article two is.
How much of that special ed is being impacted by local entitlement?
None of this part is in, this is, none of this is local entitlement.
4.69.
There you go. So special education in the FY '18 budget is 4.64 dollars.
And that is a percentage?
Which is?
Sounds like 25 percent.
Yeah. No.
And that's mandated?
The state average, that's, the state average is about 16 percent of the budget. That's about 13 percent of our budget. State average is almost 16 percent of the budget, especially cost. You know, like I said, our special ed costs are low. We don't ship kids out of our district. You know, most schools, they ship separate kids out of the district. And those are huge, high costs, and we just, our special ed department works very hard. They keep kids in the district. We try to do it in-house, which has reduced special ed costs. But part of the downside to doing that is, as our special ed population has increased, we don't have the staff to handle it. So we've had to increase our staffing.
The other thing I wanted to point out is, you all are probably familiar with the facilities committee work that we did. And as a consequence of that, we built some additional money into the budget for some facilities work. But we also tried to take advantage of the revolving renovation loan fund, so that vast majority of those costs are covered by that program. Or what we have to pay back is significantly reduced, plus zero interest rates on economy of five years. If I remember correctly.
Correct. It's actually, those are all, those are credit loans. I mean, it's actually less than zero. You know, you, five years at zero percent, you can only pay, you don't pay it all back. Those are, it's as close to free money, which doesn't exist, believe me, I know, but it's as close as you're ever going to get. Those are, those are fantastic. We did build some more money in the facilities. I'm just looking for anything else that's up. Our other instruction was up. We have built an extra $50,000 in to help with the nutrition deficit. We don't, we don't break even on nutrition. There's so many regulations from the USDA nowadays, that have increased over the last, you know, X number of years. What we give per meal, what we, for revenue. And what we can charge for a meal, versus what it costs, we're losing money. So there was some money to start tripping away at that. That's a $50,000 chunk of money that's been added, which is, that's in there. I'm sure you'll hear about that.
Why don't the prices increase?
We can only increase the price, and I'm going to struggle to come up with a, we've increased it as much as we can. The state gives us a ceiling, and we just, we just can't, we can't go over. And we still lose money.
Are all school systems faced with?
A lot of them, yeah, they are.
Regulations that are too low?
Yep, they are. I mean, we held the line with prices. You know, you can increase so much every year, so some places did increase along the way a little more than we did. So probably a little behind the eight ball more in that case. You know, we, we are trying to increase, we actually do, don't lose money. We actually make money in our practice programs, trying to, you know, increase that. Increase alacot sales, that helps, trying to increase that. You know, you've been to a lot of facilities, or at least aware of the facilities committee work. You know, things like nutrition is a perfect example of, if you have three cafeteria workers, you know, one out, you know, running the cash register, and then a couple of other people in the, you know, in the kitchen. One serving, one, you know, prepping food out of the oven. So you have, in general, one full-time person, a five-hour person and a two-hour person. They can easily, they could handle a school of 450 people. We don't have schools, we have schools of 250 people. There's a perfect example of what we're trying to accomplish with our facilities committee work. As you have that level of staffing, for 200 students, 250 students, you can't have less staffing. You need someone running the cash register, you need someone serving food, and someone's got to be working the ovens. But because of that level of staffing, that drives the price per meal way up. Our, our, our food cost, you know, for employees is way higher than it should be. But there's not a real good solution to, other than, that's if we were able to, if we can figure out a way to reduce buildings, there's a savings. You know, it's the same with custodians, it's the same with, first grade is a perfect example in our district next year. You know, if you look at our first grade classrooms, we have, in Belgrade, let's see, let me look at the numbers. Oh, print that one, small font. I was being mean to the board on that one. In first grade next year, we have 27 kids in Belgrade. Well, that's two teachers. That's, you know, 13 kids in a classroom is way smaller than we need to be. And in first grade, we have 43 in China, I think. Well, that's probably going to be three teachers. It's just that, those are difficult numbers. If you were to combine schools, you'd make savings. So that nutrition cost is just, there are, there are opportunities like that to do the types of savings. And we're trying to look for those ways to do it by looking at closing buildings, by looking at, how else could we combine things? You know, we look at Belgrade and Sydney. I know there's some roads out here, the Mills Road. They try to say, what if we had those kids go over to Belgrade instead of going to Sydney? We look, try to balance the class size. You got to tell parents, you can't go to the school in the town living. They say, well, I go to daycare. My kids at daycare, and they're ride, so, you know, those things get more difficult. So that's probably why our nutrition cost is so high compared to some others, you know. And a lot of schools face the same issue, but that's a hard one.
You still have a lot of money owed to the nutrition?
We still have a lot of money owed for nutrition. That has, that has, over the years, we have, well, we've been losing money and not addressing it, so it's being addressed. And we, Gary went to Bobby and said, look, we need a, well, there was different conversations. Five to seven year plan, we need to get solvent on.
Need to get your money back.
We need to, we need to do that. There is some money owed from just kids that haven't paid the lunch bill. But the majority of it is, we lose money every time we start our lunch. I'm hoping for less regulations from the federal government. I think that will help. I'm hoping for, you know, I hate to increase prices in lunch. We have kids that can't afford food now. It kills you to increase food, but, you know, we're trying everything we can possibly make up.
The other point is, Will, Hamilton Nutrition Director has been trying really hard to improve the quality of the meal. Because for a lot of kids, that's the meal, is the only meal, the most nutritious meal of the day that they get. So that's a trade-off, is to pay a little more for a better quality.
And healthy food costs more. Fruits and vegetables are the most expensive thing we serve.
Some schools do community gardens.
Yeah, right back here, yeah.
Oh, Dick Horn.
Yes.
Over in the revenues area, tuition revenues up from 30,000 to 35,000. And you have other revenues up 25,000 to 100,000. How solid are those numbers? I'm also kind of interested in where the revenues are coming from. You know, back in '16, it was only 10,000.
Yeah. I will, I will verify where those are coming from. My guess is, I don't put together revenue plan yet, so I'm a little bit of a guess on this one. My guess is, other revenues most likely are students, middle school students who, we have three, four students from Bassettboro. So we take, we tuition, so we get tuition dollars from those students. The tuition is most likely, that 30, that would be most of that 35,000 dollars. I'm going to have, I'm going to have to check into what other revenues are. The tuition revenues are probably the students that live outside of the district.
Okay.
But I will, I will check what the other revenues are. I apologize for not knowing that.
If those are off, then.
Those should not be off. Gary, Gary does the revenue prediction, and his revenue prediction is typically extremely accurate. I mean, the biggest thing with tuition we have is we don't get tuition numbers until the following year. So then we have to go back and make, I think in December we get the, so we have to make adjustments. But tuition has, on average, gone at 4% every year, so we. And that'll come to me in the middle of the night. I know with that other revenues, Will.
Keep it to yourself.
Yeah. If the Belgrade Select War gets an email at 1:00 AM, don't tweet that.
My phone will just go ding.
Select War?
Jack asked.
Jack? Yeah, I just wondered if changes in the level of state funding are factored into the 3.6% that you were talking about? Or whether that's still?
That's a good one. The 3.6%, I don't want to put that to anybody. The 3.6% is our, that's our spending plan. So the revenue side from the state funding isn't really factored into it one way or the other. That won't change, you know, what the state gives us for money doesn't change. That, that 3.6, that's what our spending.
An internal.
That is correct. So our spending plan, we plan on spending 3.6% more, more dollars.
Okay.
You know, hopefully, we will get lots and lots more revenue, you know. But right now, we don't know what we're going to get. It is strange not knowing pushing to, not knowing what the state is going to do.
So the 3.6 isn't a particularly good predictor of what?
Nothing to do with the revenue. There's been, I mean, there's been years where, and I've talked to some people, especially from the old committee that I was on, in the town of Belgrade, where there were years when we had a one and a half percent increase. And I think it hit you guys to like, I don't know, like eight or eight and a half percent one year?
Almost 9%.
9%. We had a, you know, one and a half percent increase, that was our spending plan. But because of lack of funding from the state, you guys, they were at 8 and 1/2 percent. Those years when we had, where Belgrade actually, less of a, so it's the revenue and the spending are completely different sides. I wish I knew when they were going to.
Well, that 3.46 isn't something that anybody can go to the town with as a predictor.
No. We have, I believe Gary has given you, based on our current ED 279, I don't know if he sent those out, but I do have what the predicted assessment will be, assuming that the ED 279 is, stays as is.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I don't, well, you wouldn't, yeah, because of course, it hasn't been voted on, but that's right. But yes, we have, we do have that all calculated out. And that you could go to the town with, with the caveat of, if the state gives us more money. And the school board has voted to give half, whatever we asked, the first, half of the money goes tax, tax, to reduce taxation. Half goes to the fund balance, half, excuse me, that's three halves. Quarter goes to the fund balance, and a quarter goes to helping with spending issues.
Howard?
I was, I was trying to get a handle on what the crystal ball is for the revenue side.
Yeah. Wow. Did you, who did you say, did you say you talked to someone today?
No, I just watched the news.
Okay.
There is, I believe the state right now has no clear idea of where they're going at all. Whether it's going to be the 3% increase on income tax for over $200,000 earners, or whether it's going to be the governor's plan. Republicans have lined up behind the governor's plan, that's what they're backing. And the Democrats have lined up behind the 3% increase. That was, the voter mandate was 3%.
Correct.
So I think this is really up in the air till the end of June.
I, I.
I just don't see anything.
I do too, and honestly, I don't, my best guess, I don't think it's actually going to be either one of them.
It'll be some sort of a guess.
I have, I have spoken to pretty much all the local representatives. And I probably focused on more on my conversation on probably the Republican side of things, just because if I can get a handle on where they're going, I think I know where the Democrats want to go. Most of them have, probably, they will be off the record, not on the record, but have said they do think we will add more money in, as a, compared to what the governor's plan is. It's opposed to how much, it's hard to predict. I've heard Gary say at public meetings that, you know, some of the dollars he's seen kicked around would then translate to us getting another 600,000 back for our district. But I don't know how to tell.
We don't even vote on the budget until we know what those numbers are, right?
No. We vote, we vote June 13th, June, Tuesday, June 13th.
With or without the state information?
With or, with or, well, we have, with the state information we have right now, or updated information if it comes available.
With the latest at that particular time on the June 13th.
Correct. It's odd not to, I mean, if by any of the budget, usually April 1st, it starts to take shape.
On the June 13th vote, it'll be on whenever budget's approved this Thursday night.
Correct.
It's a, you know, changes, other than that are.
And what hasn't ever been done at the general election?
It is being done, the budget verification referendum is being done at the general election.
I see.
That's what June 13th is.
June 13th is the?
It's what you call.
Budget validation, budget validation. That's what we vote on it. The town votes on the day. So May 18th, this Thursday is the town meeting.
But the 6th, the 6th is election, is the general election day, right?
No, June 13th, it's the second Tuesday.
13.
It's always the second Tuesday.
He's talking.
June 8th is a Thursday.
You mean the primaries, the state?
The day that we call June 200 day is when a lot of towns have their annual elections. And that's the day that we scheduled the vote on the budget validation referendum, because we were getting a lot of feedback at the governance meeting, the people wanted to push it back so they could save on election costs.
So isn't June 6th then?
June 6th is the first Tuesday of the month. So I can be impressed, Carl, that time, so.
Second Tuesday, right?
Second Tuesday.
And we're, that's, is that it?
Yeah, June 13th.
Then we got it, June 13th. It's one will vote.
Looking at town?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that the election, I thought the state election was June 6th.
The November election's the first Tuesday of the month.
June is the second.
What is called June primaries is the second Tuesday.
Okay.
Howard, you made my heart stop for a second. We worked hard to get that on the June primary day.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No. I'd like to say I'm glad that, glad that you came, both of you. And it's refreshing to have some answers. And somebody can just give us the answers rather than.
I would be interested in next year and figuring, like, this, last few years, I've watched our, we've added the governance meeting. There was a, there was a push to add that, which I think was, that's, I like those because they're prior to, you know, the budget being finalized. And then we do the, you know, the travel and road show where we go out to communities. And we don't get many people show up. So we did reduce the number of those this year. But I'm curious what you folks, is it like that? We didn't have one in this town. We had one in.
You guys have one.
We had two of them.
Well, we attended, some of us attended the one.
We had one in Oakland, one in China.
In Oakland, yes.
So I'm.
You must have been at the back, because I didn't see anybody that I recognized from Belgrade at the, at the public hearing. You were at the governance meeting.
The governance meetings were very low, 10, and those are awesome. I'm curious, this type of information, I am, you, I, you invite me, I'll come out here. But if you want, you know, almost like schedule it, I mean, I'll, I think it's more open communication.
So why not?
I want, the year before last, we had a meeting here in Belgrade.
Were public hearings.
The public hearing, yeah.
This year, we had two.
And I think two of us went, and Becky was there. It was just not intended, but.
We've had some where nobody showed up, other than the administrators and school board members and, you know, the town manager or something.
Well, I really want to thank you guys for coming.
Is there anything else I can provide for you guys? And I know, I don't know if you support the budget or not, I'm not even asking you that question. But I, I want the towns to support it. I mean, we've worked really hard. The academics are improving, our scores are going up, things are moving in a good direction. I think we're trying to fix a few problems, but I also understand that ends up being an increase.
Yeah, and I think any increase we are, it gets us.
I know, I know. And I think, you know, maybe with a little more work, we can continue to get back, you know, if we can get it back down where you guys would openly support it. Please keep me.
Well, you've been very good to us over these, you've been here whenever we ask.
I told you I'm going to move out here someday. You guys got to get the taxes down, so I can afford it. I'm just kidding, come on, that was in the show.
You got to get the taxes down.
The thing is, we, our tax obligation for the town budget is $85,000 less than last year. I didn't do the math. I was going to try to do the math to see all the increases that have led over the last five, six years. And have that number, and it's basically old school, too.
Well, certainly over the last three years, I remember, we had, we're flat last year too, so down this year.
Well, the feeling that we have is that the school board administration doesn't really care about the budget, about the budget going up. And the effect it has on Belgrade, on going, Sydney. But they're, the two big towns kind of lead everything.
The two big towns, what?
Lead everything, and you guys be damned. And that's, that's something, if that's really what's happening out there, that's got to be fixed. At least a change in attitude. And that's one of the reasons I think you don't see many people at these meetings, because they figured, why bother?
Well, because when you go to the, to the town meeting, you're going to see that it's pretty well stacked. That you'll pass it at the town meeting. I've not seen anything different. I do the same thing.
I take exception to the word stacked, because that suggests that we're out, trying to get employees to show up, and we actually don't.
I'm not saying that. Well, I'm saying your supporters go to it.
Well, and the detractors can be there too.
They could, yes.
In other years, we've had the open articles where you could amend up or down from the floor. But traditionally, we've done the closed articles to try to at least go into it with a knowledge that it's not going to go any higher.
I have my deepest apology if I.
No, 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 I'm just, sorry if I overreacted.
We just have a number though.
Well, who's, I mean, it's not something that we're controlling though, Howard. I mean, you want more people there who are post the budget than.
I'm not blaming you.
No, no, but it just, it sort of comes across that way, and so that's the only reason I react the way I am. Like, anybody who's a voter has a right to be there to vote. Anybody from the public has a right to be there to listen. And we do not actively solicit just the.
But sheer numbers.
Well, sheer numbers, I mean, if you're concerned about the deck being stacked, then the folks who are concerned about the budget, I guess we'll try to get more people to share you.
We can take the whole town over, and we're still going to be able to. So moving on to the next year.
That's not.
I'm fighting for you now, already, come on.
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
Okay, folks, we're going to move on. Thanks again. We do really absolutely appreciate.
I know you do, and like I said, I hear what you're saying about, you know, about earlier is better. So let's, let's start talking November, December, I would more put in the budget making process. Really, really real.
I'm with you. Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
And second item on the agenda. Let's not have two meetings, please. Friends and Belgrade Lakes Village, the escrow account, I would, I would ask for a, or a motion to table that. It's been moved to table it. Do I have a second? And all those in favor? It's tabled because there's no new information, but I don't want to see it go away.
It's not going to go away.
So.
Friends of the village.
Friends of the village, yeah, there's just no new information. We didn't table it last time, it's now tabled. And I think it's on the list.
What, I guess one question on that is, the only thing we're looking at is the amount of money that you required, right?
Yeah, well, we're actually, we asked them to go forth and come back with some figures of whether it was, you know.
How much money to put in the escrow?
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, is the money in the escrow account.
They're waiting to get some figures back from the state.
And then according to the agreement we signed, we set that amount. But I suspect we don't want to set it too high, because it would make any sense. So they're going to come back with some information, and then we'll reconvene, and that, we'll set an amount at that point.
As far as the contract itself, that's. As far as the contract itself, that's already in place.
It is in place.
Quick question. On the escrow account, if and when that amount is determined, is that a candidate for a subaccount within the town's unified investment account?
Yeah, I don't know.
Probably.
I would think so, but I just don't know.
It'll have to be.
I would guess it can be.
Yeah, it'll have to be put in books somehow, that's the most logical idea.
Or if you like a cemetery account, it'll be. Yes, if there's subaccount, if the interest and dividends are kept separate for that amount. But I just wondered, I thought I'd bring it up because it has to go someplace.
Yep.
That'd be the safest.
It seemed to me it would make sense to put it there, yes.
That'd be a paper.
Third item on the agenda, marijuana moratorium ordinance, what we're talking about here is our schedule. We have to have a, a public, a hearing on this, and I think that we have the schedule, am I right?
Yeah, I recommend it the thirtieth, it's ultimately up to you guys.
Thirtieth, you recommend for the public hearing?
Because it's plenty of time.
And then it goes on to ballot number thirteen.
Yes.
Thirtieth sound good? What night is that?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Is that a night of work, it's not a meeting night, is it?
This is the last meeting.
And we have it here, six thirty? Everybody concur?
Yeah.
Thirtieth sounds good? Do we need to move that?
Yeah.
I want to hear a motion then.
Make the motion, we meet on the thirtieth.
In a second.
Public hearing on the thirtieth at six thirty, all second, that makes sense.
Move in second, all those in favor? Or then, move that. New business, there's only one item, that's town manager salary, you should have all got Melanie's email. She said that she feels that a fair amount would be four hundred dollars a week, which would be the difference between town manager and the treasurer's salary. Had we went out and hired an interim town manager, we would be spending a whole lot more than that. So, can I hear a motion to be accepted?
Move acceptance.
And a second.
Second.
Second, and any discussion?
I thought we discussed this, and maybe this isn't the time to do it, but we discussed this when we was talking about this deal. If you remember.
I don't remember that.
I think it came up, but I don't think we decided anything.
Well, I thought we did, but whatever.
Well, the, the, the salary is a public thing, I mean, that's.
I know.
We don't, we don't have to do anything beyond that. We talked about it in executive session, but I don't believe there was money involved with the conversation.
Okay.
In my recollection.
I don't remember that.
Okay, good.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm gonna pull it.
Four one.
So we are, on the, the town manager's salary was Carrie's.
Oh, there's one other point in this, there's one other thing, yes, yes, yes.
I think you missed one too.
Huh?
You missed, you jumped over, you went from.
Well, I did, I jumped over the warrant, I shouldn't have.
No, no, the poll permit application.
Oh, that's.
Dead issue.
Dead issue.
I haven't done that before, I know.
Yeah, it was on, it's on private land.
It is a dead issue, yeah.
Okay, good to know.
Under, also under town manager salary, Carrie left, what, how many hours?
One hundred and sixty-one point five hours of earned time.
Of earned time. And, and she'd like to be paid for that. However, our, our guidance for employees said the maximum she can carry is forty. And as a matter of fact, she knew that, she talked to me about it before she left, that that was a decision that had to be made. She's asking for the one sixty-one. Our employee's guide said the maximum anybody can carry is forty, or they lose it. They have to use it or lose it at that point. Yes.
I guess my only objection is just doing the forty, and I'm not, I think we should do just the forty based on what we read. Unless there was something in her, in the town manager's contract, and I don't recall anything, so.
I asked her and she said there was nothing.
She didn't mention that, she understood the differences.
We had this, we had this situation go up, I think it was with Mary. And the vote then was just give her what the books are, the maximum she's hours is forty hours.
But I think the difference is, an hour away per a sin, and you're talking about a salary person, that's the difference. I've never heard of comp time for salary person.
The, if you're a salary person, our personnel policy says you get comp time at one and a half hours earned time, and if you are a salary person, then our personnel policy allows it to be every hour, hour for hour, you don't get time and a half.
So a salary person should be punching the clock so we know it's accurate.
Absolutely. And the treasurer.
Because I can.
It also says the treasurer needs to track the comp time, and I wasn't tracking salary person.
No, I mean, you shouldn't have to, but I mean, we're taking somebody's word if this is what they got for comp time, is what I was just trying to say. Personal on salary, I, I never got comp time, and I've been on salary for years.
Well, we need to address this, that, we need to address our policy and change.
Well, I understand that, and I think sometimes it's changed for people's own benefit, and that's why I would say against changing anything before, but let's just get through this.
Well, we didn't just change that.
No, I know, no, we, we changed some stuff in the last.
That's taken part of, it's been there.
I know, I, I'm, I know, I'm just, that's why I didn't want to change anything until a new town manager came in on anything, that's why I was so adamant, but whatever, we'll just go with this.
Argue.
Was, was Melanie supposed to be tracking this, or was it, I mean, was that?
Personnel policy, well, I track everybody's comp time.
Okay.
And, and according to the personnel policy, anything over forty hours is tracked by the treasurer.
Is what?
Tracked by the treasurer.
Okay.
And I wasn't tracking her comp time, I was not aware of it until she logged to me.
So, I mean, should you have been tracking it, is it, is it, I mean, I guess I'm trying to get at, does she have the comp time and it was our fault for not tracking it, or?
No, she, she handed in time sheets, but they have time sheets, sometimes she can have been late, but she got her forty hours whether or not she worked forty hours. So sometimes she'd just walk into my offices and put her time sheet right in my file after payroll had already been done. So I went back and I pulled a couple of them, and these night meetings that she, I don't know, even added, like the selectmen's meeting, she didn't even add them to her time sheet. So none of her time sheets recorded any comp time.
That's something we really need to look at because the salary. And maybe there needs to be a cap, fifty hours a week or something based on salary, anything over, that would be.
Looking for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion if you pay the forty hours.
I'll second that. Any more discussion?
I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is there any reasonable reason why we should pay her the one sixty-one hours? I don't, I don't, I'm trying to get at that, it's, apparently there isn't, I mean, if you.
We, I, I think, yeah, we've went for forty before, I suspect she does have comp time.
Yeah.
But not as being tracked, I'm, I'm, I suspect forty is just fine.
All right. Again?
Any more discussion? All those in favor of forty hours? All those opposed? Four one. Yeah.
Can I request that the select board look at the personnel policy? And am I the only one who has really never heard of salaried people getting comp time?
No, you, I, I, I was salaried for years and years and had comp time.
You had comp?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I had my own hours, in fact.
I never did, now I'm salaried for, I am now.
Depends on the organization.
The hospital pays it too. Hospital pays it.
Yeah, I, I have, I mean, it can go either way.
Yeah, but normally if you have, if you have a salaried person, there's a, there's, Eric is pointing out, there's kind of a level that's effective of that salaried person for the salary that they're being paid, that's more than the forty, forty hours, and I think that certainly is, needs to be a consideration in the future.
Absolutely.
Hi, Eric.
I think we should have some research done with other towns and see how they handle the salary within.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I think when any gets here in place, we can take a look at that and see. Do other towns do it, or if they don't do it, I wonder, the federal government does it, Michael said the hospital does it, others don't do it, but it depends also on the salaries in some of those cases. If you're making two hundred thousand a year, you're probably not gonna get comp time.
I know, TD Vane, Kathy worked here because she, she did benefits and stuff, and some of those people made big bucks, but it was salary. If you work eighty hours a week, eighty hours a week, plain and simple.
Okay.
We need to just see what helps us.
So, let's, let's say, just go back, let's, with the, let's say that Melanie had been tracking Carrie's comp time hours. Basically, if she had, if you tracked it from day one, then you would be, you would have like sent her an email and said, by the way, you've got almost forty hours of comp time, and so you better take a day off. Or you're losing.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, and because that wasn't, it wasn't necessarily, it was more Carrie's fault that it wasn't kept track of?
She didn't give me her hours.
She's the boss.
Okay, so, so she, if she had kept better records, then she would have taken this time throughout her time here, and she would only have forty hours left at this point.
And in fact, I think she did take some comp time over, I mean, I think that it's fair doing what we're doing.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
All right.
Sir, would you read the warrant, please?
Warrant sixty-one, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. This is warrant sixty-one.
Can I get a motion to accept that warrant?
Tell me it.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the warrants?
I got one right off the bat. How did you, you got the other person on the list of mileage for two hundred and, two hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents?
Mileage, because I go to the bank every day, and I haven't been paid for six weeks.
I thought we had somebody coming to pick up the money here.
We didn't, because they were only coming once a week to pick up our deposits, we stopped at that last fall sometime, and only worked for a couple of weeks. We had somebody coming and picking it up, but they only came once a week, so we had a large amount of money that was sitting around, and then when it came to the end of the month, it went to them several days by the time they drove to Lewiston to deposit it, and it was actually deposited. We made sure that it was all in the bank before the end of the month, but they didn't make sure it was there until the following week, and it was just, it was not working. So we put money in the budget so that I go and I do our deposits every day.
All right, I think we need to look at that sometime down the road, but that's fine for now.
More questions on the.
I got another one. You want to be, are you?
No.
Hang on, I'm looking for it.
There's a typo on four ninety-three.
On what?
Four ninety-three, manual publishing, it's a town then, that tier way in.
Page number six two. Um, Minutemen signs, DOT signs, it said, are those for the library?
They are for the library.
Those are the directional signs that we gave permission of order.
Okay.
Two signs.
I have one more. Town of Belgrade cups, what are those for?
When we had Carrie's party, we got cups for the party.
Okay. I guess that's it, that's all I had.
Anybody else?
No.
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor of accepting the warrants? Five oh. Under other. Danny says he'll be here the first, his actual first workday is the fifth, that's the first Monday in June. He is available, he's been talking to Melanie, she has ways of getting ahold of him if she needs him. From my perspective, it looks to me, I come in most days, things seem to be running pretty well, so. I'm not seeing any picketing outside of the building, I'm not seeing rocks thrown in the building, nobody threw a rock at Dean.
Nobody's put a D in.
That's right, so. Anything else?
You have a run screening from your place, so that's good.
I do want to mention that I hired her, the inter核, her name is Carolyn Cool, she's here on Monday to learn payroll. And then she has a full-time job managing a store, and I think Mount Vernon, two stores in Mount Vernon. Her days are from Monday and Wednesday, and so she's here helping me do payroll, learn and.
Anything else?
Anthony has some things that he needs you to sign.
Okay, where's the signature thing?
Well, Phil totally has.
Oh, town manager.
I don't want, I don't want.
You're telling me why? I don't know if the Carl coming by and Becky coming by is, was helpful for us or not, I, I wanted to know why it increased. I guess I, I got the answer.
We got an explanation anyway. Big news.
No, I don't think it's big.
I think it's, I think it's square with us.
So that's the warrant, the notice of election, that they are assumed that the selectmen have to sign before we can post it. We've got Danny's contract that needs to be signed.
Can we discuss this contract? Do we discuss this contract?
You mean, the stipulation was sixty a year, five percent in six months?
We usually go over it though, still.
Yeah.
Huh?
We usually still go over the contract then.
Yeah, that's good.
Because he did make some changes, I don't know if they were typos when, I think Carrie typed it up for him, or he made some changes in it.
Then we definitely need to see it.
Yeah. I think they just typos, but yeah, I think he should have filled it.
You have your.
He signed it.
Why is the poll for that issue?
Because it's on private property.
Why was it?
I don't, I didn't know that, I just got told that somehow, they already knew.
Yeah, if it was on public property, we'd have to give them a permit for it.
Oh.
So they requested the selectmen sign it, and I didn't know it wasn't on, that they didn't have to sign it, it was on private property, and so my, my intentions, we called, Anthony called the gentleman that submitted it. And he.
They went, it seems like they jumped through a lot of hoops here, and I'm like, why'd they do that if they didn't need to?
They didn't know.
Right.
And because it's fair play.
One of the house staff here on thirty-five.
They put polls up every day and.
I know, thirty-five is, oh, the Manchester Road.
He said as he thought.
Last thing was, Karen was talking to him, trying to find out who the actual owner was to discuss the rats with him. And Gary, although we're sending them a letter.
Who are we talking about?
House, um, Manchester Road.
What about it?
Well, that's all right.
There's, there's complaints.
No rats?
Squatters there, we had apparently the squatters there.
Oh.
We, and bank, well, bank doesn't own it, but they're foreclosing on it, so we're trying to find out who the owner is, and the neighbors are complaining loudly about it.
Love you something.
How do we want to review Dennis's contract? Wanted to send out copies?
It's an easy thing to do, how, how involved is it? At least, can you highlight the changes that he made?
See how it says, it closes the phase of the twenty-four.
What we normally do, we go into executive session to discuss it as a group, but however you guys want to do it, we're doing things a hell of a lot differently than we ever used to, but.
Well, how did you used to do it?
We used to, used to go in the executive session and just go over it, I mean, in case we want to make, normally we didn't have a salary set and all that junk either, but whatever. No, I'm not just talking about this, I'm, I'm pretty well at it, so. Just, you're, you're far better off.
Now, these are for the public hearing.
I've had enough of this shit.
The one this was the article, though.
How many do we have to sign, how many to sign?
We'll sign them all.
Okay, give it back to me.
And they won't, they can't have the meeting if they don't sign it, so.
Oh, well, okay.
Well, I tried to do that one year.
Send the cop around.
No, they said, they said we can, they'd go to a judge and get it. Here's another one there.
That's the only changes you made?
Right. Thanks.
What is it, Kerry?
Changes total sick days to 24 days a year, and, and then changed the accumulate sick leave at a rate of eight hours for each month.
There's more than the yellow tags you got to sign, I think.
Okay.
I may have missed one. Not a whole, there's a whole bunch of them, and they just be signed, not just the ones too. Keep, they look like that.
Yeah, better go through them.
Yeah.
Just jellied that over real briefly and see.
If that's all the changes, then...
There is hardly any changes.
But...
Let's not, let's not...
Doesn't matter. They should just jump on time with what you're doing.
Do.
What's that?
They should just jump in there, time with what you're doing, too.
Yeah, well...
Too late, that's all right, stop the next one.
So sick days is 24 days a year?
Yeah, you, you want the 24 days of sick leave a year is what you say, which comes up to two a month.
What does the policy say about sick leave?
And then the, the other one, he, it was, there were two numbers there, there was a four and an eight, so he stretched out the four.
First, the policy says that they get eight hours a month.
Eight hours a month? That's what, what he's asked for, right? What he asked for?
He's asked for 24 a year. I think that's what he, I didn't really read the contract.
Take them out, from these pages. Let me just sign the last.
Yeah, just go ahead and do copies.
And he, the selectman said, I didn't sign that.
Are we supposed to sign, are we supposed to sign here, do we?
Well, probably, yeah, I would say so, that's another one.
Well, it didn't have a tag on it.
I know. I'd say all, just, they all, they'll send them back if you didn't sign.
There you go, call.
Yeah, they didn't sign yet.
Send it back this way, and they'll sign what I didn't sign.
I signed for it.
Should go by stamp.
His contract's right there. Come down.
Go sign that. Let me check this gentleman's character out. Do we know? What do we know about? Now this.
There's two copies in there.
Oh, okay. Melanie didn't sign either one of them?
No, read it over. There's only, there's the second page, it's got two changes, and it has his salary and his increase.
Will that both accept the changes, so?
Well, he's got to redo the contract anyway, all the changes, he can't just sign out.
What did Kerry get?
For sick leave? Whatever, and the other number, wow, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're signing, they're signing nothing.
I think we can buy him out.
Here, why don't you read this one?
Do you want to sign from all of this?
Yeah, see, this, this one had all of them, all the yellow papers in it. He's got all these. What is this one for?
It's the...
Both of them? Marijuana ones?
Yeah. You have to sign both copies of this?
Well, it's a, it's for...
I need three signatures, and I, I voted against it from now on, I mean.
Well, that's for both?
Um, I still voted against it.
Or the school vote?
No, the marijuana thing.
Oh, well, that's the marijuana vote.
So this is a misprint, this here?
Yes.
Did you find any other one?
No.
No, it just, it was not a change, it's just a misprint.
I didn't, I voted against the public hearing for the...
Never got friends, don't you?
Did you? Did we ever vote against the public hearing?
No, did, did they ever have the public hearing? I voted against.
You voted against the warrant?
No, I voted against the public hearing.
Oh, you did? Did I?
No.
You both voted against the walking, you both voted against the marijuana.
Yes.
Yes.
They're putting it on the ballot.
Yes.
So there's three signatures on there.
So does that mean I don't sign the public hearing thing?
You can.
Oh.
I'm not signing.
Okay.
Signing, I don't...
Well, Brett's not signing, I'm not signing.
It doesn't indicate whether you're for or against.
No, I know.
Okay, so this is all...
But I voted against it, so why would I sign it?
Probably because you have to have a hearing.
Yeah, we're supposed to sign here.
If that be the law, you, you agreed to follow the law.
Oh, all right, so we're just...
We got three signatures.
Okay, that looks great.
What's this? Who did you sign this, did you sign this to? Marcus is the only one who signed it.
Oh, I guess I didn't sign that one either, give it back while you're right here.
And did you vote for this?
No, probably not.
Which, which one was that?
Oh, it's more pages than this thing, that wasn't Mark, and...
Well, wasn't Mike?
No, was it, the little yellow cat wasn't here?
Oh, no.
Good.
There's another one. They keep surprising us.
Why is he got three signatures on it?
That's right. Yep, I think that's redone, the corrections, we can sign that.
Did he sign it?
No.
No, we didn't sign it.
They got to be...
Yeah, he signed it.
Yeah, he's going to have to sign another one, because that's got to be retyped. I'm sorry if you want...
Probably doesn't have to, but I'll, I'll...
Well, it should be, I mean, it's kind of a...
You got two pennies change, change, it's probably fine.
Well, we should, we should initial the changes, we agree with it.
Huh?
Should initial the changes.
Just retype it, and he'll come in again.
Yeah, I think that's, or the back page, I don't think there was any changes on it, was it, you could just keep the back change. So what you could do is the rest of it be typed, and then just keep that back page, you can sign it when it's all typed out.
Oh, that's good. Just call, commit and do it.
Yeah.
Melanie, call us in, so we can sign it before.
You don't need to tell the fifth, sixth, or seventh, or whatever it is now, anyone.
Probably, we won't have another meeting.
Check the back of that.
Check the back.
We've had people work a lot of things. You're off to...
He knows the rules.
Yeah. Challenge, I know, move table.
We done? Do you have any else?
We got the other, other people wanted to ask any questions, but yes, we got anything.
So you want to make a motion to adjourn, or not?
I'll make that.
So be it.
Motion second. All those in favor?
I'll vote for that.
You approve that?
I approve that, yes.